The board will now come to order. And then hit. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingrassia, Alderman Coder, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Ingrassia, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson. You have nineteen present, Mr. President.
Quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Before we begin prayer today, I'm going to ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence for the victims of the Capital Gazette shooting in Annapolis, Maryland. Five members of their staff were killed and several others wounded. Even with that, they still, the paper was still able to publish their paper this morning, which is just amazing. And most importantly, here at home, last week, you know, we all mourned the passing of St. Louis Metropolitan Police Officer Alexander Klein. He passed away over the, over the last weekend from an accident at his home. He was only 27 years old, and I know a lot of you knew his father, who was a retired sergeant of the Metropolitan Police Department. But join me in a moment of silence for both of them. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen? We have with us today also, Elizabeth Franklin. She is the daughter of none other than Ken Franklin, and I know all of you know Ken Franklin. But Elizabeth plans to grow up and be an attorney. She helped bring, bring us into the session today. So let's give Elizabeth a big round of applause. We'll continue with our agenda introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from 13th.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans from the Carpenters District. Thank you.
Alderwoman from 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome my guests Frederick Cersey with Plumbers and Pipe Fitters and Al with the Fire Department.
Alderwoman from the 28th.
Mr. President, I'd like to welcome Gretchen Waddell-Brewick from the Sierra Club this morning as my honored guest.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have for my guests this morning Demetrius Alfred, president of Firefighters Local 73, and Nathan Lett. Thank you, from Firefighters Local 73 also.
All right, Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Konstantin. You had a memo, welcome back. Thank you.
All right, Konstantin. Alderman, Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my esteemed guest this morning Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T and Dr. Kenneth Franklin with Metro.
Alderman from the 12th. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like to have as my special guest Mr. Percy Green III, the Vice President of Fire.
Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Mr. Thomas Bradford. He's a longtime resident, a person who has been a part of Development Concepts for Co-op Living and a number, number of other initiatives throughout the city. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Provenable minutes.
We have none, Mr. President.
Report of city officials.
A copy of the report of city officials has been placed in all of the aldermen's mailboxes. From the office of the mayor, dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the civilian oversight board. The reappointment of Ms. Heather Highland, who resides in the 8th Ward representing District 4 and whose term will expire December 31st, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Jane Abbott Morris, who resides in the 6th Ward representing District 2 and whose term will expire December 31st, 2021. That is the extent of report, office of the mayor.
Alderman, Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the civilian oversight board.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that these go be assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
All right, it's been moved that we assign these to Public Safety Committee. Second about Alderman from the 22nd, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please assign that appointment to the Public Safety Committee. We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to place Board Bill 10, which is currently on the informal calendar, on the perfection calendar, please.
Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bill 10 at the tail end of the perfection calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone else like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone else like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items nine through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Number 93, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Cohen, Bosley, Alderwoman Navarro, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Ingrassia, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Rice. An ordinance requiring a citywide vote to approve any proposal aimed at or having the effect of privatizing the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport by the sale, lease, or transfer of the airport either in whole or in part from the city's ownership or control as may be permitted by the FAA's Airport Privatization Pilot Program and the Modernization and Reform Act and in accordance with all other applicable state and federal laws and regulations and the revised code of the City of St. Louis and containing a severability and emergency clause. That is the extent of the first reading of board bills, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bill 88 in Ways and Means.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 93, to the, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 88. That is the extent of reference to committee, Mr. President.
Second reading.
Board Bill Number 54, Committee Substitute As Amended, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. An ordinance adopting the 2018 International Residential Code for one and two family dwellings with amendments including appendices E, F, G, H, J, K, M, R, S, and T, repealing ordinance 68789 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 55, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. An ordinance adopting the 2018 International Fire Code with amendments including appendices B and C, repealing ordinances, ordinance 69600 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. An ordinance adopting the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with amendments repealing ordinance 68792 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. An ordinance pertaining to the Mechanical Code of the City of St. Louis repealing ordinance 68639 and ordinance 68847, adopting the 2018 International Mechanical Code with amendments including appendix A and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill Number 60, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. An ordinance adopting the 2018 Fuel/Gas Code with amendments repealing ordinance 68638 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill Number 61, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. An ordinance adopting the 2017 National Electrical Code with amendments repealing ordinance 68831 containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 90, sponsored by Alderman Coder. An ordinance, remending ordinance Number 69146 and 69153 authorizing other related actions and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderman Williamson. An ordinance approving, approved and recommended by the Preservation Board and Planning Commission of the City of St. Louis pertaining to the Skinker, DeBoliver, Caitlin Track, Parkview Historic District, amending ordinance 57688, repealing and replacing certain standards for the Skinker, DeBoliver, Caitlin Track, Parkview Historic District as set forth herein. Board Bill Number 92, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Bacaro, Alderwoman Ingrassia, and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance adopted pursuant to Section 70.210 through 70.325 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, authorizing and directing the city, a constitutional charter city of the State of Missouri, by and through its Director of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry to execute and deliver an intergovernmental cooperation agreement by and among the city and the Art Museum Subdistrict of the Metropolitan Zoological Park and the Museum District of the City, a political subdivision of the State of Missouri. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy. An ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Robert Prager Way to begin at the intersection of Morgan Ford Road, Bates Street, and Bates Street and run west on Bates Street to the intersection of Bates Street and Graboy Avenue. That is the extent of second reading, Mr. President.
Alderman, Alderman from the 18th. On that perfection consent, you had some bills that you'd like to move to informal calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Would you place Board Bill 53, 56, and 57 on the informal perfection calendar?
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that. 53 Committee Substitute, 56 Committee Substitute, and 57 Committee Substitute to the informal calendar.
So noted.
And then at the request of Alderwoman from the 1st, move Board Bill Number 1 and Board Bill 68 as amended to the regular perfection calendar. That's Number 1 and 68 as amended.
So noted.
So altogether, you have 53 Committee Substitute, 56 Committee Substitute, and 57 Committee Substitute to the informal calendar, and Board Bills 1 and Board Bill 68 as amended to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance concerning certain business license regulations set forth in Title 8, which require completion of a plat and neighborhood consent petition prior to obtaining an occupancy permit, repealing ordinance 56788, 57294, and 58645 pertaining to arcades and containing a severability clause and an effective date clause. That is the extent of the perfection consent.
Did you get Board Bill 62?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Board Bill 62, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro. An ordinance repealing ordinance 70026 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of a 3:00 AM closing permit for any currently non-3:00 AM licensed premises within the boundaries of the 28th Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of the perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 18th. Entertain a second motion, second about Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Number 1AA, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and President Reed, the budget for the present, for the fiscal year. Board Bill 68AA, sponsored.
Hold on for a second. For the perfection calendar, you have to read the board bill number and the forward on it, and then pause, and then I'll go to the other. So start over with Board Bill 1 as amended.
Board Bill 1 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and President Reed, the budget for the fiscal year.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on the perfectional board bill, 1 as amended.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move Board Bill.
No, no, firstly, we have to perfect it.
Okay.
We have to perfect.
I move for a perfection of Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
Been moved by Alderman from the 26th. Entertain a second on the motion, second about Alderman from the 19th. Alderman from the 26th, you're now clear to discuss Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill Number 1 as amended was a tough budget. And we discussed a lot of issues in the Ways and Means Committee, but we've had tougher budgets even in '08, '09, '10, and '11. So we have seen some tough budget. When the market crashed, houses were upside down, people were losing their mortgage, and it was tough back then. But one thing we discussed, we cannot continue to tax the residents of the City of St. Louis. So that's something we need to get away from, and we need to do a better job of generating revenue for the City of St. Louis. The Chairwoman, Alderwoman, Alderwoman of the 19th has some excellent ideas on how to generate revenue for the City of St. Louis. So that's something we need to discuss in the future, and we need to really come up with some ideas by thinking out the box so we can generate more revenue. A lot of our equipment is breaking down, the refuse, heavy equipment, which hopefully in another couple of years will restore some trash trucks. You know, forestry equipment is breaking down, street department equipment is breaking down. So, you know, we've had a lot of problems with our equipment. And that's lack of revenue to replace that equipment. So that's why we need to come up with ideas of doing that. City employees is a problem too. City employees are a problem too. You know, back in the '80s and the '90s, city employees used to receive a 3% raise. Alderman 12, he knows that. And a 5% too, along with it. So a lot of years, they used to get an 8% raise. And that haven't happened in 20 years. And that's sad. That's one reason why the morale is low with the city employees. All we get right now is a 1.5 raise, and all that does is just keep up with the cost of insurance. So we need to come up with some ideas so we can take care of those city employees so they can get their raises. Alderwoman of the 1st Ward, who is the Chairperson of Public Safety, has several meetings, public employees, excuse me. I stand to be corrected, public employees. Sorry about that, Mr. President. We're trying to take your job. So anyway, yeah, public employees. So we've had some city employees come in and discuss some of the woes and the problems they were having, especially of the water department. Water department, you know, I thought was a decent paying job to be with the water division. That's not true. And they came in and they talked about the low salaries they're getting, and in raising a family, when you're paying $300, $350 a month with insurance, you don't have much to take home to your family. So it's very, very expensive, and it's really a hardship on a lot of city employees. And that's something we need to look at and work out. And they are the first responders of the city. So without them, we'll be in trouble. And water department is important because, and I'm sure the Alderwoman of the 1st Ward will kind of elaborate on that. But all's not dark in Denmark. We do have some highlights of this budget. Just wanted to go over there briefly. In the $560 million of this budget, each ward will receive $328,000 per ward. So that's great. Demolition will get $3,675,000 for demolition. Recreation will get $975,000. And the breakdown on that $975,000 will be $375,000. Will employ 11 full-time recreation employees. $600,000 will be for RFPs or nonprofit organizations. Different organizations can apply through the City Recreation Division to help them out with different programs. The homeless department will receive $775,000. The breakdown on the homeless outreach funds is $70,000 will go to One Advocator for Homeless People. $100,000 will go to Two Homeless Outreach Coordinators. $600,000 will help make improvements to the Build-A-House. And we got $200,000 that is going to, I mean, $200,000 that is going to the mediation program that we voted on at the Board of Alderwomen. We got $900,000 that is going to the Police Academy. Now that Police Academy will recruit young men and women to join the police force for the City of St. Louis. It's kind of like an internship. And not only that, you know, hopefully they can do a better job in recruiting African-Americans to join the police force. We got $3,000,000 for our credit rating for the City of St. Louis. So that'll help out with a little bit our credit rating. $3.5 million will go to the Housing Affordable Trust Fund, which is needed. $275,000 for youth jobs. $575,000 for the state audit. Now the state audit is going to cost us probably about $1.5, $1.7 million. So this is just a partial payment with the state audit. We have $100,000 going to the Communication Division to, you know, improve and update their equipment and to come up with closed capture. $200,000 will go to the Medium Security Institution, also known as the Workhouse for the Air Conditioners. Now the big thing about this budget was the NSOs, as everyone knows. NSOs, jobs were on the line, and the heads were on the chopping block. So in talking to most of the aldermen's down here, majority of the aldermen's wanted to keep their NSOs. Now some aldermen's are not happy with the NSO. Some aldermen's can care less. Some of them aldermen's share the NSOs. But for the most part, most of us wanted to keep our NSOs because they do help us, some of them within our community and our wards. So thanks to the City of St. Louis treasurer, Tashar Jones. Out of her blood, she gave us $800,000 to restore their jobs. So it's been a pleasure working with everybody on the Ways and Means Committee. I look forward to working with you next year if I'm allowed to be the chairman. So we got a lot of work to do. We appreciate it. And with that, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I would like to thank the alderman from the 26th Ward for a lot of your hard work and I know very stressful meetings trying to get this budget passed.
Alder, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
There's, I do think that this budget in a lot of ways is an improvement over what we have done the last couple of years, particularly with regard to fully funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is something that I know advocates have been pushing for, for a number of years. There is one thing in the bill that I am still concerned about, though. And that is the $275,000 that is allocated toward youth employment off of the Prop P money. When Prop P was sold to the voters, we said that $975,000 was going to be going to youth programming. And while I understand that some of that money was diverted into the cadet program to recruit into the police department, I do not feel like that was the intent. That is not what voters thought that that money would be used for. And I think we have to be very careful about not, about allocating money that voters approved to items that are different from what they thought they were voting on. And so while I do think that this budget is much better in terms of laying out our priorities, I still have concerns when we are not allocating things directly toward what residents of the city thought that they were voting on.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board. I ask for the Board Bill 1 and my own board bill to be taken off the consent calendar because I wanted to speak to the budget. I know how hard it is, if you're a sponsor of somebody else's bill, trying to get it through. And I know that the alderman from the 26th really worked hard on this budget. Unfortunately, the Board of Aldermen does not have the input, I think, that we ought to have with these budgets. And then we're under the constraints that if we don't pass a budget by the, what, today? Then, oh, I'm sorry, by Sunday, I guess, that then whatever the mayor sent over becomes the budget. So we really have very little input about the budget. So for years, I don't vote for the budget. I don't vote for the budget because when I drive around my community, I look at the, what I believe is a mistake in the priorities of this City of St. Louis. I've been around here long enough to watch all the money go for a football stadium. We're still paying. We got three or four more years before the stadium slash convention center is paid for. That's $6 million. I've saw, I see all the things. I see us giving money to somebody who is supposed to rent from us, but they don't pay any rent at all. And as a landlord, I have had people who have used some of my space. But if you don't pay rent for a while, you build out yourself. You don't come back to your landlord and say, "I'm not going to pay any rent. I'm not going to do anything." And we always push, "Oh, but it's the taxes coming in." I think that's a bad deal. I think that we could have gotten a much better deal, and we should not have given them money to fix up a space that they're not paying rent for. I know that we push, we run some things out of our city. I was glad to see a taste of St. Louis come back to the city. When I first came back here, we pushed this thing. We were going to have these festivals. And we ran him to Chesterfield, and then that never occurred. So great ideas are great, and new ideas, but they ought to have some, some basis in reality. I'm looking at the whole Paul McKee NGA deal, which if you go back and look, I say it, I do not believe that he would be the person doing this deal. He had too many problems. And now here we are, five years, four or five years later, and exactly what's coming on. So we do not vet things properly, and we waste a lot of money. So what happens, then neighborhoods have to suffer for that. When I meet with my community, the things that are important to them are not getting done. Trash is not being picked up properly. And all of a sudden now, we discovered after all these years that our trash trucks were breaking down. That wasn't something that came along all of a sudden. That has all, we should have been replacing the trash trucks. When I left here in 2003, citizens weren't paying any money for trash. Then we had to pay 10. That money should have gone into a separate account specifically for replacing trash trucks and things because you cannot do a good trash run without good trucks. That was brought home to me this week because a trash truck broke down right at the corner of Euclid and Northland, one of my nicest blocks, and could not be, had to be there overnight. They had to come back the next day with another truck, unload all the trash, clean all of that up. And I want to say they did a good job because they even brought the fire department to clean up the mess. But my constituent had to sleep that night with the trash truck and all that comes with it right next to their house. And that is not fair to them, okay? And this is something that the prior administration let happen while we were giving money to billionaires. And this is something that the prior administration let happen while we were giving money to billionaires and as I said before, throwing money at strippers who threw it back to us. We were not taking care of our services, so we don't pick up trash. This whole thing of not cutting grass is totally ridiculous. It is an insult to every one of us down here who has tall grass that's up to his knees. The city actually has a law that says you can only have your grass so high. If your grass is not so high, they actually send people letters and then they find you, then they go out and cut it. The problem is, they let LRA's property come up to, above your knees. That's because somebody has set a precedent that we're only going to cut lots so often, we're only going to cut properties so often. So when I drive around my neighborhood, all the residents have cut their grass, it's the city that has not cut their grass. But you know what? When I go to Forest Park, that grass is cut. I go to other parks, the grass is cut. Why are the parks more important than where people live? So what you do is the city promotes a lower standard in my community and it's like, oh, look at those people, don't care anything. All the citizens have their grass cut. It's the city that's doing that. That's a policy that started under, because I didn't, this wasn't like this when I first got down here. This started under Francis Slay when he was the mayor. And now it's being continued under the new mayor, Lyda Cruisen. It is an ignorant, terrible policy not to cut grass. And it encourages other people who are marginal not to do things also. The city ought to cut grass and it should not get any higher than our law allows. And if we can't do this, then we ought to allow the citizens to cut the grass and charge us for it and be able to take it off of their tax dollars, because it's not right. And I actually have almost finished legislation saying just that, that if LRA, they should be able to send us the same notice that forestry sends us to LRA and say, you need to cut your grass. And if we do not cut our grass, they ought to be able to cut it, give us a bill and send it, and then take it off of their tax dollars. Because it is not right to ask citizens to have grass grow up to here next to the property where they are cutting. It is wrong on all, and especially if we can cut City Hall and we can cut the forest park and be manicured, the parks are not more important than people's neighborhoods. So that is the thing that really gets on my nerves and that's why I vote no all the time. The other thing is these buildings. The buildings are out of hand. I'm sorry, I want to go back to forestry a little bit. I want to give a shout out to forestry. I call Alan Jinkerson and I am on Greg Hayes a lot. I know this is not what you all were supposed to be doing. Forestry was not supposed to be cutting all this grass that they now have, because they have inherited way more property from LRA than ever was thought. But when, when problems become a problem, don't let them sit and fester. What a leadership looks like is that we need to address that, we need to have ways to cut the grass. It is not okay. And if it's Todd Waltman doing it, who's the mayor's operation manager, he needs to be fired. You already know, I think he should be fired. But you cannot just let grass grow and let people have to be next to that. And then they, when they call the city, this is what they do, when they call citizen service, they say, call your Alderman. And so why are you saying call your Alderman? So now I pass out to my ward, this is that thing called a table of organization. There is nobody that reports to Sharon Tyus. So I say, who is the person who is in charge of picking up trash? That's Nick Young. Who does Nick Young report to? That's Jamie Wilson. Who does Jamie Wilson report to? That's Lyda Cruisen. That is no place in there that Sharon Tyus or any of these other Alder people control the departments. The mayor appoints her directors and they control all of this stuff. So if your grass is not getting cut, Alice Jinkerson, Alan Jinkerson, then Greg Hayes, oops, that goes back to Lyda Cruisen again. What I want citizen service to stop doing is telling people to call us as if we've done something wrong. We have not done anything wrong. Most of us would fire many of those people if we could about not taking care of our citizens, okay? This is a policy that comes from the mayor's office. It is not the members of the Board of Aldermen. So when they do that, I tell them, call, I tell them, get the name of the person, because I'm then going to call over there and talk to that person. I want to talk to Dottie Pennington, whatever her new last name is. Why are you telling the people to call us? Because we didn't do this, this is not our policy. We are not the executive branch, we are the legislative branch. And we have very small things we can do. Now we could cut them completely out the budget, that won't help you, because then you won't get any grass cut. But I want the citizens to understand, any service that is provided by the city of St. Louis, it is not the Aldermen that are not doing it. So when they're telling you to call us, that's because they're trying to move the blame away from the mayor's office. And I don't care if that mayor was Sharon Tyus, that would be my fault if I was not getting the grass cut and not demolishing the building. So stop blaming the Aldermen. As citizen service bureau, stop telling people to call me, tell them to call the mayor's office and complain about that. That's who makes that call. And if the mayor has somebody who works under her making that call, then she even, either needs to make him do his job or fire him. It is not the Alderman. Let's go to buildings, that's another reason why I vote no. So when I left office in two thousand and three, I started out in nineteen ninety-one with a hundred and twenty-something vacant buildings. I went up through my seniority, I got the buildings down to maybe forty buildings or so. So we were well within what I could eradicate buildings. When I came back in two thousand and thirteen, thanks to that racist redistricting that they, and gerrymandering that they did, and cheating, they had taken parts of my community and put into four or five other wards. Well, now the fourth ward comes up to my back door. The Alderman from the fourth has been sick. So they have decided that they don't tear buildings down, they cut grass by ward, so that the Kingsway East neighborhood always has grass up to here from some park, because they cut by ward. No matter how many times I said, that's an ignorant policy, why don't you just, when you come over here to cut, cut by neighborhoods, they still do the same ignorant policy. Hear me when I say, if I could fire everybody who's following that ignorant policy, I would. That's the same thing about demolition. We did not have any vacant properties hardly in Kingsway East, okay? Hardly, all of them was gone. Wow, on the forty-seven, forty-eight hundred block of Northland, there are like eight now. And this is why, when you have a ward, because all around me, I didn't lose any population, we were the A-team. All around me was D, E, and F teams, losing thirty-eight, forty-five, forty-eight thousand, four, four thousand eight hundred people. When you take and put the people who are thriving and put them in wards that are not thriving and you put them on the edge, that person does not have an opportunity to address those issues without some more support. So when you gave each of us an NSO years ago, Mayor Bosley did that. When he gave us each NSO, we didn't have the same problems. There's, Alderman from the fourth needs three or four NSOs, not one NSO. That doesn't make any sense. Other people, I would have even shared an NSO with somebody at the time, because I didn't need, I didn't have the same problems. But boy, I want to tell you, I have them now, because the Alderman from the fourth has not been able to address, so it hasn't gotten better. What has happened is we got vacant property all up to the back door in Kingsway East, the forty-nine hundred blocks, back door vacant properties. Good thing, the new public safety director, guess where he lives? Kingsway East neighborhood. When he calls me now to complain, I said, oh, guess who's in charge of that? You are in charge of that. You! And so now I am schooling him about what has happened, okay? That ain't me, because we didn't have this. I addressed this issue. Alderman from the fourth has agreed, we're going to try this summer to put that part of my community back up under my control. And it's nothing that he was doing wrong, it's that this was ignorant, what was done in the first place. And he cannot, even if he wasn't sick, there's so many problems in the Ville, in the greater Ville, putting Kingsway East didn't help, it just hurt the neighborhood. In fact, people would think you did it on purpose to hurt the neighborhood, because we vote the most, we were the highest voting Democrats. We, when Freeman and Verbusse won, when, when, what's his name, Shrewsbury thought he had won, oh, well, where did all those three or four thousand votes come? It came from our ward. So what you do is, in the black community, you destroy what's good. I can't imagine in any white community, if one ward was thriving and all around it, it was not, that you would have torn up the white ward and then put it into all the wards that were not. In fact, they would have been in the newspaper saying, what did that person do? Wow, that's great. This is how you do that. What was Sharon Tyus? You're the man, you're the woman. But instead, the conversation was, she don't get along with nobody. Although I got the highest return rate except for one in the city, okay? So I got along with the people who I'm supposed to, because we're a representative form of government and I go and I represent them. Alderman Kennedy got a part of my ward. He called me within months of getting a part of my ward. He said, oh, I know that you represent these people. And he does know, Alderman Moore says the same thing. Because I am out there. I was lucky to be in something that Alderman Kennedy was having yesterday. I'm every place trying to find out how I can copy not steal. Copy, not steal, okay? So when you destroy communities like that and then you don't address it, if you wanted to tear my ward up like that, you should have made sure my community looked the same way it did when you destroyed it. You should be making sure all those buildings that need to be tore down, because what, and some of them wouldn't have needed to be tore down, because people got mad and left, because you took their vote away. And so in a city where we're supposed to be encouraging people to stay, we encourage people to leave. And I, there's a new article just appeared and said, oh, St. Louis is about to get, by twenty twenty-five, we'll be white again. Why, so, who cares, okay? We're black rights now, why aren't we addressing the issues in our community? Stop making it appear that black people don't care about their properties, because we do. It's the city that's running our property down. When you don't demolish buildings, when you don't cut grass, when you don't have enough police, and I'm not hating on anybody who's getting stuff, I want you to have it, because you deserve it. And so do all the citizens who lives in other parts of the city of St. Louis. North St. Louis is purposely being demeaned. And we all know, people always say, why are you always talking about that Team Four plan? Because when you look at it, you know that it's being implemented. You do not have to pass an ordinance saying this is going to happen to implement it. So what has happened is, we just don't do those things. We think that's okay. So because I've lived in all parts of the city, I do drive all parts of the city, I lived right around the corner where the mayor lived for many, several years. I've lived in South St. Louis, in the eighth ward for eight, eight to nine years, now been in South, in North St. Louis for thirty, over thirty years. And I drive back to see, and I see the decline in services in my own alley that used to be immaculate. All of a sudden, you can't get trash picked up, you can't get bulk picked up. And then what I discovered in being the chair of public employees is that we have these things called memorandum of understanding. And the memorandum of understanding was a particular horrible clause that gave the right to the drivers, based on seniority, the right to pick their route and also pick their trucks. Now why is this heinous? This is horrible, because the drivers can decide, they don't want to drive in North St. Louis or parts of Southeast St. Louis. So they pick all the pristine routes and then they take all the new trucks right with them. Now if that isn't what I call racist and ignorant, I don't know what is, okay? So what, this whole thing of this truck breaking down in my community is a product of something that the mayor's office, the prior mayor, and now the current mayor is implementing. So I raised so much heck about it, and then I wrote to the director, Mr. Franks, that he said, well, this is not legal. But a few days before, the commissioner of track, refuse, Nick Young, had come to the streets committee meeting and told him that he was still enforcing it. Now I want to thank the Alderman from the twenty-sixth, because he sits on both of the committees, and he talked to me about it. And I'm, so I went to read it, not legal. These are the things that make for a city that is not growing, that one where people are leaving. Also, we've had, I've discovered, we had a thing about leaf blowing. But guess what? The leaf breaking and blowing only happened in the second ward in all, most of the South St. Louis wards. Not any in the North St. Louis ward, even though I have planted in the last twenty years, three or four thousand trees, there was no leaf blowing. This is all discrimination and it's all... I, I know the mayor's office don't want me to be talking about that.
Absolutely.
I don't want you in your office and do that. You're loud. Okay? This is not how you grow a city. This is how you make people leave. So the article I just got says how black people are leaving. Well, yes, and I can tell you what the black people are leaving, they're not, it's the middle class and upper middle class that can leave, live someplace else. They are leaving, because that's what the administration in room two hundred wants. They want them to leave. When they redistrict me and gerrymandered me, I had to beg my constituents, don't you leave, please don't leave. They would call me, are you and Sterling leaving? Nope. In fact, we're doubling down, we're going to buy property in the neighborhood, we're not going anywhere. So they always boast about the Central West End that used to be North St. Louis, but I live five minutes from the Central West End, we could ride our bicycles, we're not going anyplace, we're going to stay right here. But if we really truly want a city that is, everybody wants to live in, the first thing the citizens want, they want their grass, the city to cut their grass, not just the parks, they want you to tear down those buildings that are leaning on people's houses, they want you to, if you're going to do a leaf blowing program, you do it for all and not other. Years ago, when we took over the school board with votes, they took the school board and put it under the state, and it's still under there, even though they've said that we've reached the thing. We want our school board back so we can have votes, we want public safety. We don't want anything more, and I'm saying we, all people, but especially the people who live in North St. Louis, who want everything that you have in other parts of the city. When I first moved to North St. Louis, I was so appalled, they didn't have a Walgreens, they didn't have a grocery store, they didn't have strip malls, I worked very hard to get those things. And you know what? While I was gone, they didn't get any more. We start doing them again, because I came back and we start doing them. You cannot continue to have policies of not cutting grass, not demolishing houses, and not having the correct amount of public safety. That's good, you got police walking in Cherokee, Cherokee deserves that. We also want police walking in Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Mark Twain, Penrose, Wells Goodfellow, all the other things. We cannot give services based on, oh, they, well, that part of the town is just dead. We're not dead, we are being discriminated against. And so when you do not give me services, I cannot support these kind of board bills that still, although we got more of everything, and Alderman from twenty-sixth is right, we don't have enough, we should not have any grass that's not being cut. We have a temporary staff that comes on in maybe April and then leaves in September. We need people cutting grass all year round until we have all the grass cut. We need the buildings boarded, we need buildings tore down, we need not, and you need to address it holistically. If you can find a ward where you only need to do five, get that one, go to the next ward, get that one, get them taken care of. Because all you're doing when you just leave them there is you're spreading blight and you're making people scared and they leave and they don't want to put their money into the city, they don't want to put their money into the houses. And how dare us send anybody a note about cutting their grass, when you can go to most North St. Louis wards and see grass up to the knees, something's wrong with that. And for these reasons and others, I cannot support this board bill. And I request in a roll call so that I can vote no. And I will vote no until we have a mayor who addresses this holistically and knows that it is not right to have parts of my community look like this.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I first of all want to compliment the Ways and Means Committee. I had the opportunity to serve on Ways and Means for ten years in a row. And I know how difficult it is to deal with a budget and to make recommendations, to take money from one department and move it somewhere else and create a lot of anxieties. While I was dealing with another budget, I was hearing about the willingness to take Alderman capital away to fund the NSOs, for example, which I don't think would have passed the Board of Aldermen if that had happened. And I think getting away from taking the Alderman's capital money to fund other departments is a good thing, because the citizens really don't know the expectation on us to use those monies to do sidewalks and all kind of public improvements. And for years, we only got two hundred and some thousand dollars. So I'm excited to see in the budget that it's three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is about the level it was when I became Alderman in two thousand and three. So kudos for that. I'm also excited in this budget about building demolition. To see that three point, what is this, seven, three point five seventy-five million dollars is being allocated for building demolition is almost heroic to me. Because in my neighborhood, we have hundreds and hundreds of buildings, derelict buildings that need to be torn down. It's a big public safety issue. We haven't been funded this type of money in building demolition for over a decade. Again, when I became Alderman in two thousand and three, we had three million dollars because of the use tax. And we went to the taxpayers and we asked them to vote for this so that we could get at least three million dollars for building demolition. Then there have been times where it was only seven hundred and fifty thousand, which was pathetic. And we couldn't do the work that we needed to do to make sure our constituents were safe. So again, I want to make, you know, just lawatory comments about, that is a good deal. Affordable Housing Commission, again, with the use tax, we said, if you vote for this, we'll have five million dollars to do affordable housing across the city of St. Louis. That has often been cut in the budget process. And to see that it's more than five million dollars is a good deal for the citizens of the city of St. Louis. So I just want to say thank you. So I just want to say thank you to Ways and Means. I also want to say thank you to the Street Committee, that I happen to be Chair of, for encouraging collaboration with the Parking Commission, so that we can get the additional revenue that we need to save the NSOs and buy a couple of new trucks. That's what it's going to take to rebuild our city. Elected officials, no matter what department or what particular office you work in, working together collaboratively, putting resources together, so that we can increase the quality of life of our residents in the city of St. Louis. That is why they elect us. It's about their quality of life. It's not about giving us a job. It's not about giving somebody a hookup. It's about doing the people's business. So again, great job, Ways and Means, great job, Street Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 18th.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to compliment the Chair of Ways and Means and the Ways and Means Committee. They continued a tradition that we tried to start when I was the Chair, and that's to have a public input process for the budget. I find it inspiring, I did go to that public meeting, to see residents, constituents, at the meeting, informed about the budget, giving their specific ideas about the priorities that they feel this city could have. And then to see that gives the committee an opportunity to hear directly from the people, and to begin to shape a budget that reflects the ideas of this community. I would like to compliment the Alderman from the 26th for continuing that. There is no rule here at the Board that requires it, there is no law that dictates that must be done, but he has continued that process, and I would like to compliment the committee for doing so. They held this meeting on a Saturday, and individuals came out and were well-prepared to discuss this budget. Should not ever underestimate the ability of our constituents to analyze and understand important issues in this community. And so they were there, prepared to give ideas and thoughts and input. I'd like to compliment them again. I'd also like to compliment the Alderman from the 26th and the Ways and Means Committee for the next thing that they are talking about continuing, which we started when I was Chair, and that is also to review the quarterly reports that come from the Budget Division. And having those quarterly reports, it helps you to understand where things are, where there are shortfalls, and what could possibly be coming up, so that the Ways and Means Committee is not sideswiped or taken by surprise. That is a very important thing to do, and they plan on continuing that as well. The budget process here is very difficult for the legislative branch. You get, the budget is required over here by May 1, and you have to have this thing passed by the end of June. That gives this Board of Alderman, at least the committee, only six weeks to look into and actually bring in the different departments to discuss the budget, while the administrative branch has from January until May, at least have those five months by which to deal with a budget. When it gets here, you're already under pressure to try to pass out something that at least reflects the needs as this body sees it as a legislative branch. I really think we need to seriously reconsider that and reshape that process, because if you're a Chair of a committee, you do not want to be known as a person that couldn't get a bill passed, and that the budget that was sent over by the administrative branch is the one that goes into effect without any input from the legislative branch, or really any input from the public, which comes with the legislative branch. So I think we really need to look at that and talk about ways to reshape that, that may require a charter change, but it's worth it, so that this board can have a real input in the process, and not just a quick run-through and quick look-over to pass something that is more reasonable than what oftentimes comes over here to the Board of Alderman. So again, I compliment the Alderman from the 26th and the committee for their hard work. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleague from the 18th Ward. I applaud the work of the Chairman of Ways and Means. You know, this is a very arduous process to go through, planning the city's budget and getting the hearings from all of the department heads, and, you know, we all know that the Ways and Means Committee carries a yeoman's share of the work down here during the budget process at the Board of Aldermen. You know, it's frustrating, having been on Ways and Means previously for a prior session, that this process, you know, really doesn't start with the Board of Aldermen, and therefore, you know, the budget itself is not necessarily reflective of the values of the voters of the city of St. Louis, and in a sense that this budget is presented to us without any public comment. You know, the budget is created at the Budget Director's Office in partnership with the Board of E&amp;A. You know, to my knowledge, in the last almost 10 years that I've been down here, I can't recall a public hearing on a budget before it gets to the Board of Aldermen. So it's already, you know, voted on by the Board of E&amp;A and sent over to us, you know, as is, basically, with the threat of if we don't pass it, you know, we... Pardon?
They have public hearings, and then a bunch of numbers...
The Board of E&amp;A has a public meeting.
No, it has, no, it has public, it has public hearings. We can discuss a little bit later, but they had a packed room of people who showed up at the last one to speak.
So, but, and it's different from the sense of what happens down here at the Board with regard to, you know, all of the meetings that take place, you know, are with the Budget Director, you know, potentially, I would imagine, E&amp;A, and the different department heads. You know, I've, over the years, had conversations with department heads who have said that they've been told either by the Budget Director, or, you know, E&amp;A, or the Mayor's Office, or the Operations Director, that they're not allowed to ask for resources. You know, they're not allowed, you know, and, you know, I don't want to get into, you know, a tit-for-tat, but I have verbatim had department heads who have told me that they're not allowed to ask for resources. So, you know, I think that that's a problem when we have department heads, and I actually, when I had the privilege of serving on Ways and Means, you know, Charles Quincy Troop was Alderman of the 1st Ward, and one of the things that resonated with me when he and I were going through the budget process was that, you know, he said that this body, this Board of Aldermen, is one of the most self-loathing legislative bodies in the entire country, and it's absolutely true. You know, this body, you know, we don't rise up to support what our constituents, you know, and frankly, we don't have the capacity to do that down here as a board. You know, it's very frustrating, you know, having one secretary that we share with five other Aldermen, and then, you know, very little legislative support, and then here we are debating the merits of a budget, you know, for weeks upon weeks. You know, I mean, the Ways and Means Committee literally spends hundreds of hours, you know, discussing, deliberating, amending this budget, you know, for it to only become an issue of, does this body pass it, or does it not pass it, and, you know, the previous budget goes into effect. I think it's rather unfair, and if you look at other legislative bodies across the country, whether it's local or state, a lot of these processes start with the legislative side of government. And so, you know, I think that that is, you know, to echo my colleague from the 18th Ward's point, you know, a point that we need to start examining, you know, what do we value in this budget? How do we feel as though we should be prioritizing spending as a city? And, you know, I think that the Board of Aldermen personally should have greater input in that process than we currently do, under a threat of, you need to pass this, or else the original budget is going into place. Well, obviously, the original budget wasn't what it should be, otherwise we wouldn't have the amendments that we've had through the legislative process. So, you know, I think that it's unfair to this board, I think it's unfair to the citizens of the city, that, you know, this process is defined the way it is currently, and I think that we need to examine that. That being said, I do want to commend the Chairman of the Ways and Means for his hard work, and the committee for all of your work on putting this budget together over the last several weeks. I know it's not an easy task, and there's all sorts of priorities from everyone down here at the Board, so thank you for that. But I do think that we need to, as a body, start working on redefining this process as a whole.
Thank you. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, before I even took this board bill off the informal, I talked to the Alderman from the 26th. Besides chairing the Ways and Means, he also sits on the Public Employees, I don't need you, and he's come to every meeting that I had, I want to thank him for that. My comments have not directed toward Alderman from the 26th, because he's done his job and then some. And he's been very supportive on the Public Employees Committee, and it was good to have him, because he was a former Chair. And as the Chair of the Public Employees Committee, I had never sat on the Public Employees, and then all of a sudden, I was the Chair. So I put in a lot of hours, and I'll talk to that later. But here's what happens. What you don't know, you don't know. And your viewpoint is based on where you come from, okay? So when I hear the Alderman from the 22nd talk about how great it is for us to have a couple of hundred thousand dollars, that's because he don't know that when we started out, we had 400,000 or more. So, when people break you down and make you think that you're supposed to have something substandard, and then they raise you up a little bit, you think you have something, you don't even know that they've been taken from you all along. So that's what has happened. When I hear him talk about the Affordable Housing Commission, so I was here when Affordable Housing Commission was an ideal in Greg Carter's mind, okay, and he said, let's do that. And we all agreed to do that. And it made so much money, it was not supposed to do that, it made so much money, that former Mayor Slay then stole the money, year after year after year. It's not been used for what it's supposed to be. So I don't give anybody credit for putting my money back where it was supposed to be in the first place, okay? Malcolm X talked about, if you want to deal with me, you want to have a conversation with me, if you got the knife in my back, if you pull the knife half the way out of my back, the knife is still in my back. If you take the knife all the way out of my back, then I still have to heal. So what I hear a lot of times, because we have a lot of new Alder people that don't know the history, and if you don't know your history, you think, hallelujah, this is great, okay? And that's why they like to get rid of senior Alder people, because they don't like you to know what the original things was. The reason why we have this gun at our head about the Ways and Means and where we have to do our budget, is because we had a former Alderman that became the mayor that hated that the Board of Aldermen had some capacity to hold it up. And we had an Alderwoman from the 15th named Geraldine Osborne, who knew how to do her stuff. So the mayor went to the citizens and put a gun to our head, basically, and put a clock on us, so that he wouldn't have to deal with her, because she knew the budget backwards and forward. That is the whole point about having seniority and being a committee chair, is so that you have had some history of what goes on. It does make a difference, okay? When I see you giving me 200 or 300,000 dollars, I want to know where my other 200,000 dollars is, okay? You can't take my money and then tell me you're doing me a good favor. You cannot put money back into the Affordable Housing Commission and say, look what I'm doing for you. I do understand what the Alderman is saying, is that he's glad to see it's different, but it shouldn't have never been that way in the first place. And the current mayor was here the whole time it was going on, so she's not an innocent babe in the woods. If we elected a new person that never served on this board, then you could give them kudos for coming in and saying, hey! But if you're going along with the stuff all these many years, you're part of the problem. That is why I do not vote for this budget, because I do not want anybody to say, Sharon Tyas, you went along with this. Now, the Alderman from the 26th is sponsoring that, I give him all respect, like I said, because I'm sponsoring a bill I don't like. You will hear me talk about my own bill, okay? I'm almost sorry that I agreed to sponsor it, and we will talk about this. So, it becomes hard when you start to move up and you become a committee chair, and you have to make decisions, and I, again, didn't even ask to take it off without talking to him first. But who I speak to are the mayors who are making these decisions, be it the former Mayor Francis Slay, or the current one, Lyda Cruzen. You are making decisions that are detrimental, not only to my community, but since you make, you think that North St. Louis is a monolithic whole community, and you don't even respond in the press or anyplace else, that we have actually neighborhoods just like Tyro Grove, Tyro Govees, but we got neighborhoods too. But you never hear that, you just hear, North St. Louis. We have all kind of neighborhoods. Since your policies so dramatically affect my neighborhoods, and North St. Louis, that I have to come up and speak to the person who is directing that. That is the mayor. So for all the good things, good for her. But, we're not getting the money we're supposed to, and Affordable Housing Commission, all that money is supposed to have been going to Affordable Housing. It was not supposed to be stolen and used for other things. And we can talk about that with Block Grant and other money, where they did the Chase Park Plaza, and then paid the money back. When you have a history, and you know what's been going on, that's when you can tell people, and so people don't have to jump up and say, that's great, because it's not great. It's just fixing what you broke in the first place. Thank you very much.
Further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 26th, you recognized close.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I just want to thank my colleagues for all the compliments, for the Ways and Means members, the hard work that we did, and going through this budget, we appreciate all those compliments, we really do. So with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, seconded by Alderman from the 19th, that we perfect Board Bill Number One as amended. There's been a request for roll call. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyas. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvie. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Oldenberg. You have 20... You have 21 aye votes, two no, and one abstain, Mr. President.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 26th, and perfected Board Bill Number One as amended. Board Bill 10.
Board Bill Number 10, sponsored by Alderman Coder. An Alderwoman Ingrascia, an ordinance pertaining to the zoning code requiring that certain uses that are regulated by a plat and petition process under the License Code and Building Code be made a conditional use, prohibited use, or use by right under the zoning code.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 10 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to perfect Board Bill 10 as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, and, 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 seconded by Alderwoman from the 6th, Alderman from the 7th, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Distinguished colleagues, Board Bill 10 is a complimentary bill to a bill we just passed on the Perfection Consent Calendar earlier, which was Alderman, the Alderman from the 22nd's Board Bill 32. What this board bill does is seek to make consistent various provisions of the zoning code to be in line with the changes to the plat and petition process. So there is, on your desk, if you are interested in following along, an exhibit, it says exhibit, marked-up version of board bill reflecting amendments to zoning code, to existing code, my apologies. And basically, what we're doing is we're taking a bunch of uses right now that are considered uses by right under the zoning code in various districts, and we're not, we're making them, they're uses by right that right now require a plat and petition process. All this is doing is getting rid of the plat and petition process for some of these uses by right, and shifting those to conditional uses. So under conditional uses, they'll still require a hearing and neighborhood input, but they will not require a plat and petition process. This has nothing to do with the excise process. It doesn't touch that at all. There will still be a plat and petition process for anything relating to liquor licenses for packaged liquor establishments or bars. This is just simply cleaning up various provisions of the code. It really doesn't start impacting any zoning districts until you get to the E multifamily dwelling district, and then if you look at the marked-up exhibits, you can see where we've made some changes and moved some things that are currently uses by right to conditional uses. There's also a one-page summary that was prepared, it's called Summary of Board Bill 10, that's on your desks if you're at all interested. I'm happy to answer any questions. This has been a lot of work for the zoning and the planning folks, and it's been a long time in the making, so I am hopeful that you'll all vote favorably for these changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on Board Bill Number 10? Alderman from the 25th.
Mr. President, I rise in support of this bill. Having been a member of the Planning Commission, this is something that we've been discussing for quite a while now. for quite a while now. I do believe...
Hold on for a second. Thank you.
I do believe that these are changes that are being made to simplify this process, but also bring the city in line with what other municipalities are doing across the country. So again, I, you know, I support this bill, and I would ask for favorable consideration by my colleagues. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the clause.
Thank you, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 10 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Board Bill 68, as amended.
Board Bill 68. Board Bill 68.
60... Yes.
Board Bill 68 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Tyas, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing Ordinance 70285 allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 1st, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 68 as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, a quick, kind of a little update. When we voted the bill out of committee, we did add all the committee members, so Williamson, Coder, Arnowitz, Cohen, and Green should also be sponsors. Our entire committee.
Mr. Clerk, please make note that add all of the committee members' names as cosponsors to Board Bill 68 as amended.
So noted.
All right, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 68 as amended.
Been moved by Alderman from the 1st, seconded by Alderman from the 18th. Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Mr. President...
And the 23rd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I heard you over there.
I'm sorry. My apologies to the Alderman of the 23rd. Please blame that on taking care of a husband for the last six weeks, okay? Mr. President, members of the board, when I became the Chair of Public Employees, that was funny to me. I pretty much sat on most committees, but I've never sat on public employees. And here I was, the Chair. So that kind of scared me, because I like to know what's going on. I like to be able to talk about it in depth. I like to be able to debate. So I didn't know, I knew some things about public employees, but I wanted to know more. So I actually went over to, they have a Civil Service Commission hearing, I went over there because I'm trying to, and I've been talking to the Director of Personnel, Richard Frank, and when I got there, I listened to all of the people speak about the problems they had with this particular board bill I'm sponsoring, and it broke my heart. I also found out that other, that I was one of the first people that they said had been a Chair that came to the Civil Service Commission. And I got that from Jeff Rohr, who, you know, I'm a police person, but I'm not always easy on the police, but he came and thanked me for coming and said, "Hey, the Chair of Public Employees is here." I appreciate that. So when I got the board bill, actually, if you look at it, it's all tagged, because I went through it the same way I would if I was on the opposite side and I was going to ask questions. I didn't know all this stuff, and so I read it thoroughly, all the way through. I had questions. I met with the Director of Personnel and Linda Thomas, who is his assistant, many times. And the last day before we had the hearing last Thursday, I actually spent, I'm sorry, last Friday, last Thursday, we spent three hours going through every page. So if you see that it is tabbed here, we went through every one of these tabs, so that I would know what was going on. And so that if any of you all had questions, I could go to that page and answer. I also went out and met with, besides having a evening public hearing, which I want to thank the Alderman from the 26th that he came, and then the President came later, we let the public employees come and talk about what their impact, what they thought was the impact on their bills. And then I went and met with the Water Department at O'Connell's one night, because I was so moved by what they brought to not only the Civil Service Commission, but the nighttime hearing we had, and they drove such a point home. They drove such a point home that I'm gonna tell you a little story. The police came, and the fire came at the hearing we had that evening on June 7th, but they didn't testify in support of the ordinance, because, and they said to me, one of the policemen who was there said, "I didn't know they had it that bad. I don't want to talk about," because the police and fire are getting a $6,000 raise, okay? And that doesn't matter, if you're the best policeman, or best fireman or the worst, everybody gets a $6,000 raise. We did take that to the voters, and that is what they're getting. And most certainly, I want them to have money. But to hear the other people talk about what they didn't have was very heartbreaking. The Water Department was brought home to me, while we call the Fire Department and the police as first responders, the Water Department is a first responder. And if you don't believe it, I want to say the words, Flint, Michigan, okay? I did not understand how important the Water Department employees were until they came to testify, because I thought, as the Alderman from the 26th said, that they were enterprise account, just like the airport, and they were taken care of. I find out that they get some of the lowest salaries there are. In fact, I had a young man who started at $14 and something, and five years later, he still does not pay $15 an hour. He's one of the people that goes down into the holes 10 feet or whatever below and puts our water pipes together. That's a very important job. We pay pipe fitters twice what we pay them. There's no reason for that. There is no reason. We want our water to be, our water is some very good water. In fact, we sell our water. So we're proud of the water. I call it Mississippi mud, I love it. I think it's very good, we do a good job. But we cannot not pay workers. We cannot, we have them as maintenance. They're not maintenance. These people make our Water Department work. And we always talk about paying people in the importance that they are. If we don't think water is important, this is what the people from the water said, "We cannot work a second job without permission," because they have to work all different hours. And because they have to work all different hours, they have to get permission if they can have a secondary employment. They also brought home that when there's a fire, and I conferred with fire, that they often have to come out there, because they have to make sure that a hydrant's work. Because if there's no water at the hydrants, there's nothing the Fire Department can do. They also talked about when all these pipes burst and freeze, because we have an old system, that they have to come out, and they have to work at all times of night. And I know that to be true, because during the holiday, we had a big hole, and it kept having problems in front of the post office at King's Highway in Lexington. It was a big hole. Somehow, the south side of Mathaplex, where I live, is connected to King's Highway. So every time they turned off the water, my own water on my side of the street got turned off. But I know how many hours they spent out there during the holidays, from Thanksgiving to Christmas, fixing that problem. And I've seen how many times we had a problem. We always have a problem over on Hampton. It seems like as soon as they fix the problem on Hampton, something else comes along. And people are out there 24 hours a day, holidays, working. We are not giving them enough respect. We have to do better. Also found out, we don't pay for their uniforms or things that they need. That is wrong, okay? We give them a $50 credit for boots, and their boots can cost $150. We ought to make sure that they have the proper attire to work in. And that's with anything, that's with the police, that's with the Fire Department. Anybody that works for us ought to have the proper safety equipment to do their job. We should not be relying on them to put part of the money in to do their job. Also, so, all these kind of things may be very sad, and we've had some commitments from the Director of Personnel to look at reclassification of some of these things, and I'm going to depend on his word. The other thing that I really want to talk about is the, we have a problem out at the workhouse and with the people who are doing security out there, in that it's certain things that we give the police, but these people guard our prisoners. We need to look at a better way of establishing pay, or some things we need to do with the people out at the workhouse or at the Justice Center, okay? I actually was the Chair of Public, I mean, of Public Safety back in 2001, and actually took a tour of the workhouse then, and the Justice Center was built during that time. These people do very important work. I'm speaking specifically to them, but I don't want to leave out any employee. What I said at the Civil Service Commission, and I want to continue to say that, is that all of the people who work for the City of St. Louis are first responders. Depending on what you need, that's the first responder. The staff here at the Board of Aldermen, and we've not had enough staff, so we know how important our staff is as a first responder to us. The people who clean, first responders. People who cut grass, first responders. We are given a 1.5% raise. One of the things that was brought home by the Water Department is that they're really going to be taking a cut, because some of their health insurance costs more than what we're giving them. I'm hoping someplace along the way, we can find more money to do even a midterm raise or something like that, because it's not fair to the workers. I come from a working-class family. My family was blue collar, they were not white collar. I was able to go to school because my family was blue collar, and they had so many benefits that benefited me. So we got to do better than that. I heard the Alderman from the 26th talking about a 3% and even a 5%. That's more on the lines of what we should be doing. And even if we have to look at the people who make $100,000 and not give them raises, because when I got here in '91, it had been a few years earlier, at the end of the '80s, we used to only let people make $25,000. The mayor and everybody else could only make $25,000. Now those salaries have gone way up. But if we're letting the salaries go way up at the expense of the people who run this city, don't let us have to find out how important somebody is if they're not here or they don't do the job. We need to find a way, if the Alderman from the 19th has innovative ideas, let's put them on the table. We need more income, and we need to pay the people. And saying all of that, I am sponsoring this board bill, and so I would seek your favorable opinion on Board Bill 68 as amended.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 1st, would you like to add the Alderman from between 3rd's name to the board?
Of course I do, I just left him out, he's on my committee. I just didn't say his name, and I'm upset, I'm sorry. Yes, I sent the whole committee, I just missed one, okay?
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 1st, seconded by Alderman from the 18th, that we third read, excuse me, that we perfect Board Bill Number 68 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules and place Board Bill Number 62 on the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 28th, that we suspend our rules for the purposes of placing Board Bill Number 62 on the third reading consent calendar. It's been seconded by Alderman from the 13th and Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyas. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Coder. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Muhammad. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohen. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Muhammad. You have 25 aye votes, Mr. President.
By a vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 28th, and suspend the rules to place Board Bill Number 62 on the third reading consent calendar. Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to suspend the rules to place Board Bill Number One as amended, and also Board Bill 68 on the third reading consent.
Okay. It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, and Alderman from the 13th. There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bill Number One as amended, and Board Bill 68 as amended on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport entitled FY19 Project List and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 75, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to $3 million of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund, authorizing a transfer in an amount not to exceed $3 million from the DSSF into the Airport Development Fund for the purpose of making funds available to address Coldwater Creek emergency repairs, Phase II installation of two 12-foot by 12-foot reinforced concrete box culverts, and the restoration of the Charlie Pad aircraft ramp, ligh hole recovery system, ramp edge lighting system, and appropriated impact improvements containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 64, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and President Reed, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 94660 Missouri RISE Statute as adopted and approved by the voters on August 2, 1994, pursuant to Ordinance 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Fund, directing the Treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund. Account One appropriating $11,560,000 from said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bay State Development Agency and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 65, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and President Reed, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax, directing the Treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund. Account Two appropriating $11,560,000 from said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bay State Development Agency and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 66, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and President Reed, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $21,877,000, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bay State Development Agency for transportation purposes, supplying the Board of Estimate and Apportionment an annual evaluation report, further providing that in no event shall the Comptroller draw warrants on the Treasurer for an amount greater than the amount of proceeds supposited in the Transportation Trust Fund during the period from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 77, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing a supplemental appropriation, amending Ordinance 70540, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2017-2018, appropriating and setting apart projected local use sales tax and gaming fund revenues to address certain shortfalls in the revenues and excess expenditures in the general fund for the current fiscal year in the amount of $3,200,000, as hereinafter detailed and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 70, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, an ordinance approved and recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, authorizing a first amendment of the lease agreement authorized by 63956 between the city and the Municipal Theater Association of St. Louis by amending Section 2, term, Section 4, other consideration, Forest Park improvements, and Exhibit C with an emergency provision. Board Bill Number 76, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the name of a new public street located in the approved Jonas Hubbard Estates subdivision located in City Block 552. Board Bill Number 86, sponsored by Alderman Davis, pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Urban League Square, which will shall begin at the intersection of North Spring Avenue and Grandell Square and run east on Grandell Square to North Grand Boulevard. Square to North Grand Boulevard. Board Bill Number 62, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance repealing Ordinance 70026 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any 3:00 AM closing permits for any currently non-3:00 AM licensed premises within the boundaries of the 28th Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of the third reading consent calendar, Mr. President.
Alderwoman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by the alderwoman from the 18th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 13th. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Aye. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Bosley. Aye. Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingrascia.
Aye.
Alderman Coder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer. Aye. Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Aye. Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Aye. Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderman Volmer. Aye. Alderman Oldenberg. Aye. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
You have 24 aye votes, Mr. President.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the alderwoman from the 18th and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill Number 1 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and President Reed, the budget for the fiscal year. Board Bill Number...
Hold on a second. Alderwoman from the 26th, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
I move for third reading, final passage of the Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 26th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 18th and the 22nd. Any discussion? It's been a crossroad call. It's been moved and seconded.
Renew my motion.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Aye. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Bosley. Aye. Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderwoman Hubbard. Aye. Alderwoman Ingrascia.
Aye.
Alderman Coder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer. Aye. Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Aye. Alderwoman Murphy. Aye. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Aye. Alderman Rhodey. Aye. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Aye. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn. Aye. Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderman Volmer. Aye. Alderman Oldenberg. Aye. Alderman Mohammed. Aye. Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
22 aye votes and 2 no votes, Mr. President.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderwoman from the 26th, and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
Board Bill Number 68AA as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Coder, and Alderwoman Green, and Alderman Vacaro. An ordinance to regulate employer-employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and the authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing Ordinance 70285, allocating a certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 1st, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 68 as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, I've said everything I had to say. I'd move for third reading, final passage of Board Bill 68 as amended.
Moved by the alderwoman from the 1st and attain a second on the motion, seconded by the alderwoman from the 23rd and the 13th.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingrascia. Aye. Alderman Coder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer. Aye. Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Aye. Alderwoman Murphy. Aye. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Aye. Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderwoman Ingrascia.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer. Aye. Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Aye. Alderman Mohammed. Are we abstaining? I didn't hear. You have 24 aye votes and 1 abstaining, Mr. President.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderwoman from the 1st, and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 68 as amended. Report of enrollment. Do you have a...
Board Bill 74, Board Bill 75, 64, Board Bill 65, Board Bill 66, Board Bill 77, Board Bill 70, Board Bill 76, Board Bill 86, Board Bill 62, Board Bill 1 as amended, and Board Bill 68 as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall on open session fix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. Alderwoman from the 18th, recognize on motion for courtesy resolutions calendar.
President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by the alderwoman from the 18th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 22nd and the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution Number 78, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, a resolution directing the City Development, the St. Louis Development Corporation, to develop a plan for a dollar home purchase program in the city of St. Louis to be implemented within 18 months of the adoption of this resolution. That is...
Alderwoman from the 18th, would you like to refer Resolution Number 78 to public safety? I believe that's what the alderwoman from the 21st wanted to do with this first reading resolution.
Yes, sir.
Alderwoman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that Resolution 78 be referred to committee, to whatever committee you choose. At your discretion, I'm fine with.
All right. I think that it was recommended by staff that it go to the Public Safety Committee. It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 21st, seconded by the alderwoman from the 18th, that we refer Resolution 78 to public safety. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please assign Resolution 78 to public safety.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolutions, Mr. President.
Second reading of resolutions.
Resolution 19 as amended by, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Ingrascia, Alderman Gunther, and Alderwoman Green. The Board of Aldermen requests that the federal and state law enforcement authorities thoroughly and comprehensively investigate the alleged wrongdoing involving Northside Regeneration, its owners and representatives or others in relation to the Northside Regeneration development.
Alderwoman from the 20th, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution 19 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for final adoption of Resolution Number 19 as amended.
Moved by the alderwoman from the 20th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 25th. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that this resolution calls for federal and state law enforcement authorities to investigate any wrongdoings by Northside Regeneration. As we have seen in the news, the city of St. Louis has been involved in a lawsuit related to the acquisition price of property previously owned by Northside Regeneration. Our own lawyers have called these real estate dealings a sham, and our own mayor has called for an internal investigation, which I think we can all appreciate, but also recognize that it does not go far enough. As the state has clawed back tax incentives given to Northside Regeneration based on facts that have come to light regarding the acquisition of those properties, I think it is our due diligence as a Board of Aldermen who approves redevelopment plans. The general public is, I would say, outraged by some of these wrongdoings, and it is our job as the body that approves these redevelopment agreements to call for investigations when investigations are warranted. With that, I ask for your favorable consideration with Resolution 19 as amended.
All right. It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 20th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 25th, that we adopt Resolution 19 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Committee report from the HUDs Committee, the mayor's reappointments to the Board of Adjustments, having considered the mayor's reappointment of Mr. George Hitt, Mr. Joseph Klitzing, and Ms. Mona Parsley to the Board of Adjustments, the Housing, Urban Development, and Zoning Committee recommends that the reappointments be approved by the Board of Aldermen.
Alderwoman from the 17th, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustments.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve the mayor's appointments. The HUDs Committee invited the three appointees down. I'm happy to say that all three...
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 17th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 25th, alderwoman from the 17th, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'm happy to report that we invited the three appointees down before the HUDs Committee. Each of the three reported their personal interest in serving on that, and the HUDs Committee had no questions to ask of them. However, it was frequently remarked by members of the committee their appreciation for their willingness to serve on that. So with that, I would like to renew my motion.
All right. Alderwoman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the board, I rise in opposition to these appointments. I appreciate the HUDs Committee having a meeting, and the alderwoman from the 6th has said before, was she objected to something people didn't come? I would have been there, except for, many of you know that my husband has been sick for a number of weeks. Thank you, God, he was released to go back to work. Eight weeks with your husband is a hardship, if you're used to him traveling. But I was at the hospital with him that day, so I could not make it. These particular people are horrendous to me, and I would have had plenty of questions to ask and plenty of statements. The thing that they do is, when we start talking about what's wrong with North St. Louis, these are the people that are wrong with North St. Louis. They go along with the zoning recommendations. They overrode one of our board bills that says they can be a gas station, right at the corner of St. Louis Avenue and Kings Highway. They think they're more important than the Board of Aldermen. Now, I know they did that under the guise of Michael Garvin, but they still did it, and I brought them the board bill. They don't care what happens. That's why we have all these gas stations in North St. Louis and all this junk and all this stuff, because they allowed that kind of thing to happen in North St. Louis, but it does not happen in other parts of the city. In fact, I want to point out to you, there is no Crown, there is no Crown Gas Station south of Highway 40, okay? There's only Crown Gas Stations north of Highway 40. And the person who pushes these things, we have entirely too many. Gas stations are nuisances. They are attractive nuisances. They should not be allowed to be in residential communities up against houses, but they are in North St. Louis. They don't require any kind of restrictions or limitations about what they should do. So of course, the Salomas, which is way worse than the Crown that's at St. Louis Avenue and Kings Highway that these people allow, now have had shootings, which we already knew because we had a history of them having shootings. And while we're closing Salamas in South St. Louis, we're pushing them in North St. Louis. Again, this is all the kind of thing that when you say you're not addressing, that you're not adopting the Team 4 Plan, yes, you are. You are doing everything that you can. They have a gas station that has to enter off the 4,900 block of Terry and put all this business and all of this trucks and stuff on a residential street, one of the nicest ones in Kingsway East. These are the people that did that with total disregard to the people who live in my community. They absolutely, I don't care if they want to serve on every committee there is, they have no business being on the Board of Adjustment, because they're not following the law and forget about what they want to do. Do they follow the law? And do we have lawyers who work for the city of St. Louis who are supposed to defend our ordinances colluding with the opposition? I saw Patty Hegeman down there with the Salamas doing this thing, and she got embarrassed and wouldn't say anything when I showed up, okay? I got texts from Michael, I'm not sorry, emails from Michael Garvin with the opposition lawyer pushing this gas station. But all of that made no sense when, in fact, we have an ordinance, two of them, that says there cannot be a gas station. But again, don't care about North St. Louis, because they don't live there and they don't have to put up with it. And when you have people like that, they have no business being on the Board of Adjustment or on anything else, and for this reason alone, not because what they want to do, because that is not the standard if they want to serve. The standard is, is can they follow the law and do what's right for all communities, not some? And I've not found them be able to do that, and for that reason, I rise in opposition, and they should be, not only not reappointed, they should be put off if they are put on. They should be dragged into court and sued for what they have done, because they, that's awful. And there is no need for another gas station in North St. Louis. If you drive down from Kings Highway to Natural Bridge, Delbar in Kings Highway, Harbor Mine in Kings Highway, Martin Luther King in Kings Highway, St. Louis Avenue in Kings Highway, and Natural Bridge in Kings Highway, which is the only black gas station left in the city of St. Louis, but thanks to these people, are about to be put out of business because they put one at St. Louis Avenue. We don't have black businesses in, in our own community, not black-owned businesses. We don't have them. Somebody who lives out someplace else who skirts our laws like the Salamas, voting from someplace in the 5th Ward with a million-dollar mansion out in the county, talking about, he lives down there on 14th Street or whatever it is. He doesn't live there. He just skirts our laws, votes illegally. We let the Salamas do all of this illegal stuff, and then we have people like this that will push them to be on the corner, because they're trying to destroy our community. This is not an accident, this is on purpose. Shame on them, I don't care, black, white, orange, or green, put your house next to it. Put your house next to it, and if you're not, then listen to the people who came down there and didn't want it. They believed the drug addicts, and they believed the alcoholics, and the people who get, all kind of people. They believed them over the citizens in my ward who owned the property. They ought to be ashamed of themselves. And so I want to just make sure I go on record as saying they are ridiculous, and shame on all of them, and they are kangaroo court, and they have no business on anything.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 17th, recognize close.
Yes, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been a request for roll call. It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 25th, that we accept the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustments, and there's been a request for roll call. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bakaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed, you have 17 aye votes and one no and two present.
By your vote, you abstain the motion, Alderman from the 17th, and adopted the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustments.
Resolution number 72, sponsored by Alderman Volmer. Pursuant to ordinance 69372, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the appropriation of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Accounts Funds for the fiscal year 2019 regarding the proceeds of the 3.16 cent tax.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the resolution, the report for Resolution number 72.
So Resolution 17 came out of...
72.
I'm sorry, what?
72.
That's what I thought I said, I'm sorry. Resolution 72 came out of Parks with a, everyone on the Parks Committee voting in favor of it. Anybody that's familiar with this wants it passed out of the Parks Committee, it just gets reported on at the full Board. The money will be appropriated to the different parks as they're broken down, the parks throughout the whole city. We do this every year. So I mean, that's the report. It was passed out with the, with everyone voting for it.
All right. Resolution 73.
So same thing on Resolution 73. They're all, the same bills.
Hold on a second. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 73.
Resolution 73, sponsored by Alderman Volmer. Pursuant to ordinance 64994, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvements Account Fund for the fiscal year 2019 regarding the proceeds of the 1.10 cent tax.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Same thing. It passed out unanimously out of the Parks Committee, and so the money will be appropriated to the different parks for what all the different Aldermen asked for. The one thing I can tell you is that the money is divided from big parks to neighborhood parks and parks now, North St. Louis and South St. Louis fairly equally.
Resolution 74.
Resolution 74, sponsored by Alderman Volmer. Pursuant to ordinance 67477, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvements Account Fund for the fiscal year 2019.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognized on the report for Resolution 74.
Same thing. It gives money to all the parks, the Aldermen all put in. I will say, if anyone has a question on any of the three, I could try to answer them. But I think it's pretty normal. We do this every year, that's why it's anticlimactic and just very, you know, normal.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Is that the extent of the...
That is the extent of the second reading of resolutions of committee.
Miss Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcement.
On Monday, July 2nd, Ways and Means will meet at 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. On Wednesday, July 4th, the Board of Aldermen offices will be closed for the 4th of July holiday. On Friday, July 6th, the full Board will meet at 10:00 a.m. in Chambers. That is the extent of announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th.
May I, this is for announcements, may I?
Announcements.
I'd like to introduce two guests that I have here today from the 18th Ward, Mr. Richard Ellis and Lynn Breland to my left.
Thanks for being here. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to have as my honored guest today Melba Moore, the Health Commissioner of the City of St. Louis. For those of, Melba, please, please rise. So for those of you that don't know, today is actually Melba's last day in the city's Health Department. She's been a longtime employee of the city and has done a lot of wonderful things for our, our communities. And so, you know, the Health Department is not one that typically gets a lot of attention, but it really does, you know, do a lot of good work throughout this, at the city. And so today is Melba Moore's last day. I want to recognize her, have her as my honored guest here, and we will be presenting a resolution to her before she relocates to, I wouldn't say greener pastures, because it's Ohio, but you know, wish her all the best in her future endeavors, and we'll get into that when we have her back for a resolution. But I do want to welcome her to the Board today and thank her for all of her service.
Wow. They're gonna miss you. Any further announcements? That was a little bit of shock. Further announcements? Alderman from the 19th.
Mr. President, members of the board, first of all, I'd like to ditto everything that the Alderman from the 25th said, and aside from that, I've known her for many years. The city is at a great loss. We didn't have sense enough to make her permanent when we had an opportunity. We didn't have sense enough to give her enough money to keep her here, and so now Cincinnati will benefit. But at the end of the day, hopefully, we will do better and learn how to keep good employees. But I also had a very quick announcement. Alderman, most of you all should be or should have already received a memo from Leonard Johnson, who is now the new Director for the Commercial Business Division, and is basically sharing with us the new process and procedures for facade. And hopefully, if this Chambers has the opportunity, he will also make a direct presentation. I think that based on all the problems that we had in the past, that we're going in a new direction that will help our neighborhoods and most especially help us when we've been talking about trying to really do a plan for facade improvement in our areas instead of everybody getting nosed and have to jump through so many hoops. So I'm looking forward to the new way of doing business with that department, and hopefully, Mr. President, we'll have an opportunity to have him make a presentation to the entire body. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Alderwoman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I cannot believe that it finally went through, because I just knew that she was gonna stay here, but we're losing a good jewel, and I hope her the best of luck, and I know I will stay in contact with her. Thank you, Melba.
Yeah, yeah. I already told everybody, I'm shocked. But we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you, and I'm looking forward to talking with you further, but wow, wow, the city's gonna miss you. You've done a great job, and I'm gonna have to drive around the corner and bug you before you leave. All right. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we, that we excuse the Alderman from the 2nd, 4th, 10th, and 16th for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries. A whole lot of you have been requesting a, an additional caucus, so a caucus will be hosted a little bit later today after the meeting in the mayor's office. I hope you can attend. Some of your colleagues have worked hard to kind of get that date and get the, everything going on it, and you know, I appreciate their work of getting a place and a date and a time to work for everybody. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to, that the meeting adjourns until Friday, July 16, 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 26th. I have to take the vote. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Stand adjourned. Alderman from the, from the first.
I have lunch early, so anybody gets there 12:30, 1:00 o'clock, I want to thank the carpenters, they are providing lunch, so, well, okay, you can have lunch twice, but we will also have it at the caucus, and I want to thank the carpenters for providing it. Thank you.